My sister-in-law teaches at Newark and is retiring, so she's counting them down.
Oh, yeah. My wife rejected.
I'd like to call to order the April 10th, 2023 City of Canow, Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Time in is seven o'clock. Mr. Deeds, please call the roll.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Gooden?
Here.
Ms. McDonald?
Here.
Mr. Deeds here, and Mr. Palsgrove?
Here.
And Mr. Ritchie.
Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to excuse Mr. Ritchie.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Waldenthaler, second by Mr. Palsgrove. Roll call. Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Palsgrove?
Yes.
Now, I need the approval of the March minutes, 2020. It's a typo in the agenda, it's 2023. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Palsgrove?
Yes.
Now, it's time for public comment. Anything not on our agenda this evening that you wish to speak about? Time limit is four minutes. If you'll be speaking with us tonight, would you please stand, take an oath? If there's any chance you'll speak to us, do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give and tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do. Thank you. I will now turn it over to staff. While staff is pulling that up, I'll just make note that we still have two tabled applications, ZM 22-001 and PDP 22-001. They'll remain on the table for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. The application on tonight's agenda is the continued discussion of VA 23-002. The address is 525 Ginder Road. The applicant is requesting a variance from Chapter 1195.04 to construct an addition onto an existing accessory structure. Kind of, I'll briefly talk about the application as it was discussed in detail last month. But the subject property is 5.05 acres on the west side of Ginder Road. It is surrounded by homes in the villages of Westchester Community. To the south of the property is a vacant, single-family lot, a zoned R3 loaded density residential. The subject property has an existing approximate 2,000-square-foot home constructed in 1922. This property was placed on the National Register in 1989. In the 1989 listing, there was note of eight contributing outbuildings, eight contributing buildings. One of those is the house. One of those is the existing garage behind the home. When looking at the subject property, there is an existing 24-by-53 accessory building that remains. This accessory building was part of an original 50-by-50 barn that was demolished in 2019. Up on the screen here in red is the approximate location of the existing building with the metal addition. The applicant is requesting to put an addition onto that existing accessory structure to be approximately the same size as the building that was removed. The applicant notes their request for the variance, how they would like it to work on motor vehicles inside of their own property rather than traveling to a space that they lease out, talking about improvements to the property as well as bringing back a structure that was removed prior to their purchase. Applicant has provided a photograph, context of the front of the home. Looking at the property here, you can see the home is kind of central to the property. To the right is one of the driveways that leads up to the carport attached to the home, a wraparound driveway with a second access point that we'll see on the other side. Behind it is the existing accessory building they would like to do the addition onto. Another view of the wraparound driveway here, one of the historic buildings on the National Register along with the house, and then the addition onto the barn that was demolished. Very crude rendering, just showing the scale of the building the applicant's requesting with the existing addition, I guess we'll be addition onto the left. And then just a comparison photograph showing from 2015 to 2022, the development that's taken, taken place around the property with the expansion of the villages of Westchester Community, Section 12. This area on the left also shows those historic buildings that were removed by the prior property owner. Again, the National Register notes that this property is known as the Parley-Happy House, constructed around 1920. They talk about its architectural characteristics, what made it applicable to be on the National Register. Later in the register, they talk about the detached outbuildings that kind of created in its domestic, commercial architecture of the interurban auto era, really the characteristics that put it on the National Register. And then following it with some of the frame outbuildings, including the large gambrel-roof barn with a dormer and two gable roof structures. That's the main barn here that was removed. This is that addition here on the side. It looks like there used to be a wooden addition in that location, has since been replaced with a more modern metal structure. The applicant's drawings that show the existing lean-to that they plan on utilizing in the new construction, the scale and massing of the new construction on the right. And then the applicant has updated the rendering since you guys' last discussion, taking a look at architectural features added to the building here. The applicant is showing the same gray metal-sided structure as before. The applicant alluded to some deficiencies in the rendering that was presented last month that didn't show all the features they wanted to do. As the applicant is showing some of the trim around the building, this is the existing structure. This door and track exists already, just showing trimming it out in white. The center door here, the applicant's showing to make it look like it's on tracks, kind of like the door on the left here where it would split open, while this is a modern rolling door. Man door here on the right, a faux hay loft kind of barn door floating above, adding two dormers to the top of the building here. Moving on to the opposite side, the north side of the building here, showing the addition of three high bay windows. And then around to the back, showing the back will be, remain as originally intended. When looking at the building material itself, staff asked the applicant to clarify kind of what they were thinking of doing. The applicant indicated they wanted to use the same G-Rib metal siding for the siding and the roof. So this image in the top is from the manufacturer the applicant submitted paint samples from. This is a profile of their metal siding in the color that's being requested. And then the right is the same manufacturer's photo from some installation projects. This is just to show you the exposed fasteners, kind of how the metal overlaps with each other and how it attaches to the framing. This is what the applicant's proposing for the sides and the top of the building. The photograph I also provided in your packet, this is kind of a zoomed-in version, but this shows some of like a white trim work, assuming the trim work will be in another kind of aluminum-wrapped metal kind of material here, to give you an idea for kind of what that looks like in terms of contrast and scale. As discussed last month, staff has not changed the staff report components for the structure and the direction for the building addition. This building is in excess of the 1,440-square-foot maximum size as permitted for the parcel. The literal interpretation of the zoning code allows for one accessory building, and the applicant already has two and is looking to exceed the maximum size of one of them. And with the addition is over what they're looking to, what code permits, while the existing structure is 200 square foot shy of what's permitted already. When looking at the literal conditions for special circumstances, the applicant did not remove the buildings that were there previously. However, the buildings that were there put the property in the National Register, and that without checking the relisting or having somebody come out, that property is maybe potential removed from the National Register with the removal of those existing structures as they were contributing. When looking at the undue privileges denied by the zoning code, just a concern with the new, modern accessory building not being compatible with the subject parcel, also just the scale of this existing structure in relation to the residential neighborhood that surrounds it. And then when looking at our codes for what this property could have in terms of future conditional use requests, this property is large enough that it fits all of our conditional use requests for churches, indoor recreational facilities, daycare centers, preschools. The applicant noted that they looked at other accessory buildings of the size and the gender corridor. Staff took a look at all those properties, and those properties, the majority of them have businesses that are ran out of those existing structures. That's the need for the scale. A lot of those businesses pre-existed them being annexed into the property, and it's like family businesses and things of that nature that have continued since they've been a part of the municipality. But again, just keeping with the concern of this building's scale and what could be ran out of it, that is still something that staff is cautioning the commission about. So staff is recommending that the variance application be denied as presented. Again, the construction type and the scale of the building's not compatible for the property with the surrounding residential homes. I'd be glad to help answer anything that you guys have. Applicants here, if you could talk about his updated rendering for you guys, it seemed to be what you focused most about during the last meeting.
All right. So questions for staff? I have a quick comment. Actually, I'll save this comment for after our discussion. So Andrew, I don't know if I asked this the last meeting, I don't think I did. So if this was not an addition to an accessory structure, would we have an variance?
If this was a brand-new building and the addition didn't exist, it'd be the same variance.
So even if the square footage was less than where it is today on this application?
So the building could be a maximum of 1,440 square feet. The addition in itself is 3,900 square feet, so it's larger than our maximum. The existing building, this component right here, is approximately 1,200 square feet, so it's just shy of our max.
Okay. Thank you. And so, I have it pulled up on my screen, but the, keep going, keep going, one more. So this would be the elevation, so that would be the west elevation with the three windows that would face now what is developed property just beyond this property?
This elevation here faces north. This elevation here faces west.
Any other questions for staff or comments?
Just back to that last picture, just so to give context. The back of that building, that is a full tree line behind it. There's what used to be, I guess, an old driveway, and then a full tree line behind that. And then basically on almost all three sides of this, there are tree growth at this point. The side that has the least amount of tree growth, I actually have communication, I received a letter from one of my neighbors in the new, the new builds behind us that would, I think it's actually that house that has the blue square on it in the picture there. He had mentioned, you know, he had, he had had a conversation with, I'd have to look back at my message, I believe Joe, about, you know, being in favor and, you know, that we take care of the property. We have a maintenance crew out there handling the lawn, and that he thinks that the garage is being an improvement to the property and things like that. And speaking to what Andrew had brought up about other homes in this corridor, just at the corner of Lithopolis and Ginder Road, so less than a mile from me, 7420 Lithopolis Road, that is a property that is a half acre. It has a 1,300-square-foot house, but has a 2,500-square-foot outbuilding pole barn, looks like a garage, nothing fancy. Just around the corner here at 6485 Waterloo, it's a 1,100-square-foot house on three acres, but has a 40-by-100 building. So it's a 4,000-square-foot building next to an 1,100-square-foot house on less acreage I'm on. I'm not saying that, you know, those are just examples, you know, I'm not one way or the other with those, I'm just, as other examples of around this area, you know, the house-to-property ratio and so on. Last time we were here, our conversation was about the general aesthetic of the building and making it look more appropriate for the land, adding the gables and the barn-style trim and kind of leaning further into, leaning into an agricultural-looking building. I think we went pretty, I think that went pretty well, making those additions and other changes.
And so, I have a quick question or comment. So in the rendering that is up on the screen, I appreciate the level of detail since the last meeting and the cupolas and the trim and the door. How, and maybe Andrew, this is on one of these other pages, how far is the back of this building, so the west elevation to that tree line? Do we know that approximately?
You're about 30 feet.
This is the tree line right here.
There's actually a driveway that can go all the way, goes all the way around in between the two. You're 30 to 40 feet, probably.
If you, there's the drawing, back two slides, Andrew, sorry.
You're fine.
There we go. You can see there's a black top marking there. That is the driveway, and then the tree line is where his pointer is.
Okay.
And then there's all that field behind it. And going along with all, you know, the neighborhood behind us, if you drive by today, you will see one of my neighbors actually mowed a soccer field into my yard. I had normal conversations with all of our neighbors. We are, we try very hard to be respectful for, to them. You know, part of this is making sure that all of my things are inside and secure and safe because, I mentioned last time, I had my truck stolen out of my driveway. But at the same time, almost all those houses have families, including, you know, my wife and I and our young son. We allow all of them to use our property as a, you know, to play baseball, play soccer, and all that kind of fun stuff. And this is just, you know, making sure that I have anything that could be potentially dangerous inside, out of, you know, out of reach of, you know, little kids that may be playing near my trailer and things like that. But, you know, I'd like everyone to be able to use the space, everyone, you know, anyone that's asked. I've been given, I've given more than enough, you know.
That brings me to a good point, too. So Andrew brought up to us before, the lean-to, we could just put a wall on and put doors in and access from that side. The way the lean-to is designed, if you put a wall down there, you could hardly use the lean-to that's there without reattaching another building back to where the other one was. The way it was designed and built was just to pull straight in through the front edge, doesn't give you enough time. If he wants to change his way on a car, he wouldn't be able to do that, plus keep his other things inside. Very difficult to store stuff in, just that, how that lean-to is designed.
Sir, could you just state your name for the record and sign in if you didn't already?
Matthew, Matthew Bell.
Okay, thank you.
Allow us to be, dude.
And there's a, there's a photograph in your guys' packet that shows an interior shot of the lean-to that the applicant sent me around January timeframe.
To go on the, the G-Rib metal siding and the roof that you brought up, too, another point with that, me and Andrew talked about, he liked the standing seam, says it looks a lot more presentable, which it does when you first put it in, but the problem is with the standing seam is you get what they call oil canning because your ribs are 18 inches apart, so you get a waviness in your metal. It's a 24-gauge metal, but after four or five years from the hot, cold, hot, cold, you get a waviness in your metal. If you go down to 5th Third, right down the road here, their new building they built five years ago, if you look at the roof, you can see the waviness in their metal. The G-Rib being nine inches apart, it's a 26-gauge metal, which they improperly, whoever screwed that one together improperly screwed it together. Your screws should go on the top ridge so that it holds better, but it doesn't oil can the same as a standing seam, and that's why I always use the G-Rib. It's, it lasts a little longer. You get, it's a 40-year metal, lasts 40 years, that's just your paint warranty. If you screw it in the proper way, you get another 10 to 20 years out of the metal itself before you have any problems with corrosion. So you're a 50 to 60-year metal on that, and you, you don't get that oil canning like you would a standing seam. And your standing seam's about 50% more in cost as well. It's like a $7,500 shingle job, your G-Rib will cost you about 15 grand, and a standing seam's going to be about 25.
Any other comments from either of you, you know, as, as updates or additions from our last meeting before we take additional questions from the commission?
Um, I think that covers everything. I just wanted to, you know, point out the changes and kind of the, where it laid on the property, but.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one, just for clarity. Is the siding color and the roof color the same?
No. The roof is just basically black, and the siding, the rendering shows it a little dark. It is, it's a charcoal, kind of similar to the door behind you there. It's, it's not black. And then the roof, the roof is a dark color, hopefully help retain a little bit of heat in the, in the winter, you know, how our winters are. And that's typically the, you know, most busy time to be in the garage, making repairs in the off-season.
It was designed with a matte black roof, charcoal sides, and then a three-foot black wainscot to break the bottom up as well. So you have the mix of both where it brings them all together. That drawing there, it wouldn't let it run on, so three feet up, you would have the same color as the roof, so it ties the roof, the sides, and the bottom all together. Same with your trim, they would be the same color as like the roof and the bottom, so all of it ties together that way.
Okay.
I think on the rendering, it shows on the existing part of the structure that, I mean, it's currently open. Is it closed as part of this?
Uh.
Or is that going to remain open?
Oh, in between the two buildings?
No, right here, yeah, this side, it shows what, the south side is, it shows.
The, which, uh.
He's talking about where the lean-to hits your regular building, so it's got.
No, no, no. The actually, the exterior part of the lean-to, right, today, that's open, you pull in, because it's gravel, right? You pull in.
Uh, no. So the only part that is open on it would be the shared wall between the two buildings, and that's going to be closed in. My, I don't have any intention on finishing the inside of what's there. That'll just be for my tractor and things like that, lawn maintenance, it'll stay gravel in there and just.
Got it. For some reason, I thought the narrow end of the structure was open, that's why it looked like it was closed with the drawing here, so.
My fault, it's my fault.
I have a question about windows. The very last, I don't know if that's a slide, do you have one that's after that? After that? It has, it has the old barn-style windows with the crosses in the windows, and the crosses in the doors. So, you know, we had talked about it being not historically correct, but having elements of a barn look to it. So I do like that you put the cupolas on the top and, and framed it out, but I have an example where the windows actually have the X-bar.
That is a photo.
What is that?
That's a photo that I put in the packet to show what the metal siding looks like installed.
Oh, okay.
So that's this photo right here.
Oh, you got it blown out farther yet.
And, yeah, that, that looks like it would be the edge of actually like the hay loft door.
Yeah, that's how the faux door would actually look, is with that cross. It wouldn't have the T. Your, the faux doors that we do all have the crosses, like an actual old hay barn.
Like an old hay barn, right.
Yep, exactly. I can trim even, like the man door doesn't come that way, you can't even buy them that way unless you make them. You could even, I mean, you could potentially trim on a man door to give you that cross look. On a steel entry door, they don't sell them like at anywhere.
Okay.
You'd have to buy one of them fiberglass, them cheaper addition ones, which I don't like putting on pole barns too much due to break-ins.
So the windows on the side are going to be real windows?
Yes.
So that you can open them?
Yeah.
They're five foot by two foot.
Okay. And then my last question is, with the type of work that you're going to do inside, are you going to put some sort of soundproofing or insulation on the inside so the neighbors can't hear you working?
The, the goal is to insulate the entire, the inside of the building. Once we get through the initial build and see where budget lands, the end goal is to insulate the interior because working in it in the winter and things like that, just for sheer warmth, much less for sound insulation and things like that. And I do think that with it being kind of centralized on the lot and trees surrounding it, that will help a great bit, you know, for spring through fall, obviously, and then hopefully by winter, we are insulated and, you know, applying for an electrical permit to have power and things like that.
Okay.
At this point, you know, even just being able to store things inside so I'm not worried about things leaving, would be, would be nice.
Sure. Sure. Just as a comment, I don't have a problem with the size of the barn, it's a little bit smaller than what was there. And I think that the, the property was intact before the neighborhood came in, so even though the regulations have changed, personally, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, and I was, that, that was my comment almost exactly. I would say as well, you know, the, you know, the, the history of the property is, you know, important, and I think they've done a good job through our discussions the last couple of months of making it look historic. And in my, my own personal opinion, it looks similar to the other properties around it simply because they're new builds and they're new development. And this barn was there for years, you know, well before that neighborhood, and I think it's a decent redevelopment of that property.
Did the building height get smaller from last month? If you look at this, if you look at this frame rendering, the garage doors, basically you can stack them, and you're at the peak. If you look at this one, it's a garage door and a half, it's, the overall height of the rendering looks a lot smaller, and this door shifted over. I'm just asking, because the scale looks different.
Just a different system.
Different system, the, the more, the current one is just a little bit more to scale. The hired better, hired a better designer used a little bit of software that was able to get it a little bit more.
So this one's more accurate than the previous one?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, I'm sorry, what's the height?
So if you look, the, the height of the building's 24, not including the cupolas, correct?
Correct.
Because if you look at this rendering here, if this is a nine-foot garage door, then this would be 16 feet tall to this rendering. And so this rendering's showing that full 24 height. So that's where my question was, this rendering, height-wise, looks more accurate. That, or this door is a 15-foot door, and that's a 10-foot man door, just looking at, you know, doing the, the multiplication of the building kind of features. That's why I wanted to ask, because it looks like the building's smaller in this drawing.
I got you.
Yeah, the peak of your truss is 24-foot, 3/4-inch with the metal on top. Your cupola's on top, do you say we're doing three foots?
I believe so.
So you're going to be 26-foot, eight to the top of the cupola. So about the same as a new build, I would say, you'll be 26, roughly 27 feet.
To the top of the cupola. It's a weirdly fun word to say.
It is. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you both, appreciate it.
Of course.
Any other comments or a motion?
I would move that we grant the variance application, VA 22-002. Is that sufficient? Do I need to read more into that?
No, that's sufficient.
I'll second it.
All right, so motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Ms. McDonald. Roll call, please.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Palsgrove?
Yes.
Variance is granted.
In terms of old and new business, I was just catching up with the last, the few members on this group about our community plan update. Next Thursday, the 20th, we'll be meeting with the steering committee to go over some of the first draft efforts on that plan. I suspect that this will be maybe one of a two-part kind of meeting series here. This one will kind of go into exploration of things that have been touched on lightly but not fully devolved, evolved with the steering committee. And then the next meeting after that would probably be a full look at the first draft, planned contents for feedback, for it to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that being said, with there being three of you here, I'll have to check if you three can vote on the recommendation to city council, or if the other four would have to vote, this conflict of interest of being involved. this conflict of interest of being involved. I don't foresee it being an issue since it's not legislative necessarily, but I just want to verify that, just so you guys are aware. In terms of other old and new business, really just working on getting some projects that have been started wrapped up, for those that haven't seen the sheets as well underway, they want to be completed here by the first of June. Looks like they'll kind of hit that target just based off of where they're at right now. You know, working on some of the other kind of outstanding items. I've been working with the applicant for the rezoning, the application's still on your guys' tabled side of the agenda. They have sent a revised, set a draft text out for staff's kind of feedback. We're trying to blend some of the comments you guys gave them with some of the things that really were necessary to clean it up. I'm hoping that all the cleanup items will be done and that this attempt will satisfy some of the comments you guys gave them last time. Like everything else, they're just basing all these changes they have with the ever-evolving kind of market and if it's, makes everything feasible, you know, making some of the feedback changes you guys have. So we, I'm hopeful we'll be back next month for your guys' look at again. Am I forgetting anything?
Just real quick question, any news on the power wash that we approved almost two years ago, or turbo wash?
Turbo wash, they're, they filed their building permits, those have come back, they're ready to be picked up and issued. And last I heard, month and a half ago, they wanted to schedule a pre-construction meeting and pick up their permit set, but I have not seen any traction on that front yet. But everything's ready to go, they have until October to start construction and then their condition use expires. So I'm sure they will stick a shovel on the ground before then.
Since I wasn't around then, is that outside of Walmart?
Oh, yeah, this is a outlaw development next to Panera for a car wash, similar in function to a mu-mu, just their tunnel is longer, I believe. But it has a different architecture to it.
Okay, thanks.
It's not a barn?
It's not a barn.
They had this, they had this, they had this, and we modified a few things and then they took it to council and turns out they couldn't do it anyways, so.
What about, so I saw the Meyer thing is underway, what about the Chipotle lane on Waterloo, are they still moving forward with that?
Yeah, they, I have reviewed engineering plans and their engineering plans are complete. They're just waiting for their phasing with basically Chipotle corporate to roll that into their next kind of series of projects. That condition use has two years as well, so they'll have two years from January, December, January to get that done. I foresee that happening sometime this fall, just based off of the other kind of projects they're doing in the region.
For the Meyer project, I was, you know, we talked about the drive-through for the pharmacy, but going in here this past weekend, they're like a whole store.
Yeah.
So was that the only thing we had to deal with was just that external or was there anything else they had to bring out?
No, so they just had to bring the external changes to you guys for review. Anything internal, we did with the building permit process, they're basically redoing the whole inside of the building. They have not submitted any civil drawings for that pharmacy project yet. I expect them really any day.
The garden center is fully stock-stocked, I mean, they've got everything in there, as if they're having a normal season, so if they're going to do anything, they'll probably wait till July.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking they'll do their engineering plans and they'll wait until the inside's slowing down before they start doing the major work on the outside.
Thank you, Andrew.
I sent some of the community plan, there was an article in the dispatch about planning for vertical corridors, so where do you want to have higher buildings and stuff. So I'll send the article, I didn't think about sending it to the rest of this group here, but interesting perspective when you start to look at what's going on, you know, what we're looking at those apartments and just, you know, identify areas where it's not just density that's horizontal, but also has vertical and you, you know, start to identify where you want those places versus having this discussion every time, you know, a project comes up, it's like, well, do we want to go that high or not? That was a kind of neat idea to add to the plan.
They were talking about, one proposed corridor was between Bexley and Whitehall and I thought, you really got that much room to.
It's a block. But I think, I think identifying some of those areas, right? So like downtown, I think we've had that discussion a bit and it's like, you know, out there by the Meyer makes some sense and maybe where we, so it just seemed like, I kind of liked the concept of having that in mind as part of the plan instead of just, you know, because I think a lot of our discussion out there with Meyer, you know, that the apartment complex was really the height of the buildings. Do we want the third story?
Yeah, that brings up a really good thought process is planning for those efforts and when we wrote the residential appearance standards, you know, a lot of the communication with city council to those code sections was our old, our old residential design standards were all about lot size and density and we totally flipped the script and made it all about design and longevity and intent behind the building. Because when you show character images of a building versus, you know, one type of another, your densities could be exactly the same, but you have a totally different opinion of it. And so that's one of the things that we strive for was to do that. We meet with residential developers, you know, once a month that look at sites in town and when they see the standards, they, their first gut reaction is, well, based off the product line we have now, it means your house is this wide on this size of a lot. And that's based off the standard saying your garage can only be so much percentage of your front face of your home. But then when we tell them, have you looked at side load communities and rear load or detached garage communities? You know, your houses could be 22-foot wide on a 25-foot wide lot, you know, if you build it right. And, you know, their opinion's like, well, we don't do that here now. So we're trying to show them that we plan for more density in a different way, that product just has to come to this area first. So it's really an educational thing, you know, the builders build what they build everywhere else on purpose because it's, you know, efficient for them. And so that's our biggest discussion with everybody is, you know, how to make it appropriate for a site and not just efficient. You know, we've had talks with a couple of different builders on three different sites here in town recently. I think maybe one or two of them will come before you guys before the year's over. And it's very apparent when you look at a plan and look at what they're proposing, if it's appropriate or not. I think you guys are really good at that and that's what we try to help screen and articulate before it gets here. But that's really the goal at the end of the day, is to make a neighborhood a neighborhood, not just, you know, a housing cube. So that's what we're, we're trying to do here and I think you guys will be good at looking at that as well.
Make motion adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, I will adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Waldenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes?
Yes.
Timeout, 7:38 PM. And just for the.